This evening, we will be doing or discussing our elementary assessment review. Mr. Narducci.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mrs. Amber Stoudt, Director of K-12 Research and Assessment, will be providing a review of several assessments used across Chandler Unified School District elementary schools. Our assessment team works hand in hand with our administration, teachers, students, and parents in providing professional development, training, system support, and test administration. Three distinct forms of assessment will be covered during this study session: diagnostic assessment, progress monitoring assessment, and formative summative assessments. I'd like to thank Amber and the assessment team as not only do they provide a pathway for our teachers to guide instructions for individual student achievement, but behind the scenes, something that we all don't see every day, her team are actually testing students on weekends on intercession breaks, and they administer these assessments when most people are home and most people are away from school. It is through quality assessment data that we can engage our students in personalized learning and tackle the task of identifying gaps and increasing our students' achievement. And I want to point out that as an important factor coming out of this or going through this pandemic, we have a lot of learning gaps that we have to identify and we have to fill, and we have to fill those quickly because if we let them linger, the gap gets even bigger. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stewart.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Madam President, members of the Board, I'm excited to share our comprehensive elementary assessment plan for the upcoming school year. This will include the purpose of each assessment and how it will best support teachers and So like Mr. Narducci mentioned, the Elementary Assessment Office, which consists of Jessica Johnston, Jasmine Davis, Alisa McGee, and Sarah Revelle, myself, support all of the assessments in Chandler Unified, in addition to the professional development on best practices with assessment during instruction. However, we have four big goals for the upcoming school year that we're planning to support for elementary specifically. The first goal being to administer and support a universal screener to K-3 students, which we'll look at later in the presentation. Along with that would be Goal 2, to administer a diagnostic to identified students from the screener. And then where I'll spend a bulk of my time tonight will be in Goal 3 and Goal 4, one being administering benchmark assessments that provide data to teachers for instructional planning purposes and to help determine student risk within the standards. And the biggest piece is to provide an assessment tool that assists teachers with the formative assessment process. And before we move forward, I really want to talk about the formative assessment process because there's a difference between benchmarking and formative assessment. Formative assessment is really the assessment that's used for learning. It happens every day routinely in the classroom during instruction. Teachers use that information, whether it be through questions or exit tickets, or even what we call a little mini summative, a five to 10 question test after the end of a lesson, to determine how their students were understanding that content and to make instructional decisions for the next day or even within that instructional period. So those are our four goals that show that comprehensive plan for next year that I'd like to dive into tonight. We call this comprehensive because they all go together. We need all three pieces to effectively determine what our students need within instruction and intervene in a timely manner. The first one being the universal screener for all K-3 students, which we'd like to use the DIBELS 8 assessment to do that. The next one would be the diagnostic assessment, which is for only our at-risk students based on the data that's provided from that screener. So not every student engages in this assessment, but we're going to standardize this using the CORE. CORE isn't new to Chandler, but it is going to be the first time that we standardize it as a district for elementary teachers because our goal is to get the data that we need and spend our time intervening and focusing on that instructional piece. And then the last one is looking at our assessment tool. We'd like to transition over to School City, which is our current secondary assessment vendor, and so we have a K-12 comprehensive assessment tool for our students. And that will support the benchmarking tests that we have and the formative assessment process within the classroom. Why this all goes together, and really the purpose of all of these assessments, is that it's legally required for these assessments to be administered. So in starting with that, it will look at ARS 15701, which is focusing on third graders and how they're doing within their reading fluency and comprehension. That's what's called the move on when reading. So research shows that if a student's not reading by third grade, they're going to continue to struggle throughout their academic career. So we want to identify those students and make sure that they can fluently read and comprehend the materials within the standards. The state uses that state achievement assessment, which is currently AZM 2, to determine the students that are performing successfully within those standards. So that's one piece of it. The state has put in checkpoints for us to determine that risk level, and those checkpoints are done with the universal screener. It's required that we provide a universal screener to all K-3 students to determine if there's risk within their reading capability. We're also required to send home a notification to families on how students are performing within those tests. We give that test three times a year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, during their K-3 experience. What's new within this measure is that now it's, or within this legal requirement, it's now required that if a student has been identified at risk within that universal screener, that we must administer the diagnostic assessment within two weeks of receiving that data back. And the goal of that is that we determine what skills those students are missing so that we, the teachers can intervene in a timely manner and close those gaps so they have that ultimate success in third grade. So those checkpoints begin immediately when a child enters into our system, and we continue to check through third grade.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So on the first bar, is there, are there still the exceptions for things like if a kid qualifies?
There is.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Just making sure that didn't change.
Yeah, so and that's usually a minimal, so you have minimal proficiency, which is within our current assessment, and then there's a cut score within that minimal proficiency when they're just looking at reading, and then they provide us that list. However, there are other things that we look at to determine if there's a reason why that child may be struggling in reading content, or if there's additional supports that can be put in place so that they can continue on to fourth grade. Absolutely. And then, so that really looks at the DIBELS, which is the universal screener, and the CORE diagnostic. But what you'll find is we're missing that piece of how the students are performing within the state standards, and that's where the assessment tool comes into play because we're able to assess how our students are performing within those standards to ultimately meet, to determine if they have that reading proficiency. So that's the purpose of those assessments and why they're in place. So looking at Goal 1, that is our universal screener, and we'd like, we plan to transition to DIBELS 8. We're currently using DIBELS Next, which is no longer on the list of approved vendors by the state of Arizona. DIBELS 8 is on that approved list. It meets the requirements, and it supports our district needs. It was selected because of the ease of transition. So while it's named DIBELS 8, it still remains on the same platform, which teachers are familiar with using, so we know there's not going to be a lot of professional development needed in transitioning to this universal screener. They're just going to need to receive the updates on the minimal changes within the assessment as they transition over to DIBELS 8. So we know that we're trying to protect that time that teachers are going to need to be in professional development for this screener. We did consider printing needs. Anytime you move to a different universal screener, kits need to be purchased, and those kits include the materials that are required to administer this exam, so those will need to be purchased. We're excited to remain with, or to move to DIBELS 8 because it remains on the Amplify vendor system, which will preserve our historical data from DIBELS Next. So we'll be able to have the data that we've been using historically, transition to the new assessment, and it will all be within the same platform. And then it supports our focus of a screener, diagnostic, and assessment tool. So while a screener is absolutely important, we need to realize that it's a screener. It's a quick way to identify risk, but that's just the start of the work. The real work begins through that diagnostic and assessment process where we can figure out the skills that are missing, and we can provide that intervention or enrichment that's necessary. The universal screener assesses these five pieces, and we typically call them the Big Five. So phonemic awareness and alphabetic principle is really looking at those foundational pieces. Can they put words together? Can they decode? Can they blend? And then it moves on to accuracy and fluency of a text. Are they reading words correctly? Are they fluently putting sentences together? We also know that vocabulary is important for comprehension. Students have to understand what words mean, and then ultimately, they need to be able to comprehend their stories and respond to those passages. And that's what the screener quickly identifies through the subtests that are listed at the top here. And all of these subtests are mini tests that take about one minute. Some of them, one takes about three for that student to perform, just to get an idea of how they're doing within those Big Five. This gives you an idea, broken down by grade level, about the time that's spent. So any, this assessment is individually administered, so each child works with the teacher. It takes five to eight minutes to complete, and again, it happens at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. We always want to look at the cost analysis when we're moving to a different assessment. This is our K-3 funding source, and because it's required, we have to administer the universal screener to receive those funds. In looking at our K-3 enrollment, with our current assessment, which is DIBELS Next, in this year, we paid $240,000 for this assessment, for DIBELS Next. In transitioning to DIBELS 8, that approximate cost will be $156,000, or $156,000, for a savings of roughly $84,000. We have a one-time purchase, which are the kits, include the materials that teachers will need, that'll be roughly $32,000. And then we have the Train the Trainer Professional Development Model, which will include one person at each campus will be trained, and then they'll go out and facilitate the training on their campuses, and that cost is $2,400 at a one-time. So in the first year, we're right under $200,000 for this cost, and then moving forward, we'll transition over to the $156,000 cost.
Quick question.
Yes.
How often do you have to go to the next DIBELS or the next assessment tool? Like, how long is this one going to last?
So it really depends on the state of Arizona and their approved vendor list. They just made that adjustment. They don't make them often. I wouldn't see us transitioning for the next five years unless there's significant changes. Mr. Narducci, would you agree with that?
I would agree, and part of the change is occurring because there was a split between the original holder of the screener, and so with that, we've been courting other companies and looking at what they have to offer, and Amber was able to find the best match for the ease of comfort of moving. We probably wouldn't move it unless the State Department said we are recommending something different.
Thank you. Moving on to Goal 2. Goal 2 is to administer the diagnostic that's required two weeks after students are identified from the screener. So any student that's identified at risk using DIBELS 8, they'll participate in the CORE diagnostic, where the teacher will administer the assessment and find the skills that the student needs to work on so that they provide appropriate intervention to that student and close those gaps for reading. This, again, is not new. This is something that some, a portion of our campuses already utilize. We're just looking to standardize it across all elementary schools so that they have the appropriate training, they know what tool to use for students that are at risk in their reading, and they can focus on the intervention practices. All right, moving over to Goal 3 and Goal 4, really, is our focus tonight of School City. We'd like to transition School City as our assessment tool, K-12. It's currently our secondary tool, and we'd like to use this for the formative assessment and the benchmarking assessments that we do at the elementary level. Our current vendor is ATI Galileo, which was implemented in 2015, and we've been utilizing ATI Galileo successfully over the last several years. However, we've outgrown that system, and our elementary teachers and students are ready for more. Our purpose in providing an assessment tool, and really our main focus of implementing it in 2015, was to provide meaningful item banks for teachers to be able to pull questions that are aligned to standards so that they can utilize them in their classroom to determine how their students are performing within those standards. Our teachers are great at that instructional focus with students, and we wanted to give them a resource where they could quickly get to the data that they needed so they could make those decisions. And so we're constantly looking at the item banks that are provided through the vendors to see that there are quality assessment questions in there for teachers to access, that they're aligned to standards that are appropriate to what they should be teaching, and that there's enough in the bank to support them throughout the entire year. In addition to that, we always want to administer quality benchmarks that determine student performance on state assessments. We want to make sure that we, when we give our benchmarks, which are quarterly, we give a pre and a post, and then we have two, one in second, we have, I'm sorry, we have one in each quarter. So in Quarter 1, we have a pretest. In Quarter 2, we have an interim, or Quarter 1, we have, or Quarter 2, we have an interim, Quarter 3, we have an interim 2, sorry. And then in Quarter 4, we have a post. And we want to make sure that those align closely to the, or mimic the state assessment so that our teachers get a temperature check of how their students would perform on a comprehensive test within their standards. Because ultimately, we want our students to exit that grade level understanding those concepts. And so we're looking to make sure that we have a quality benchmark in place for students and teachers that are reliable and something that they value when they're looking at the data after. We want to make sure we have access to current and historical student data. Right now, we have a split, and that was intentional based on the needs of elementary and secondary. With secondary being at School City and elementary being with ATI Galileo, when a student exits sixth grade, and the junior high would like to look at data for how they performed in K-6, right now, the current process is that they put in a data request with the assessment office. So we've really removed that authentic experience of a teacher being concerned about a student or even wanting to see if they can enrich a student's progress within the standards by having the ability to look at the performance K-6. Right now, those middle school or high school teachers would have to contact us, wait for us to respond, and provide that data. By us having a K-12 system, we've completely removed that process, and it's on demand for that teacher or staff member when they're wanting to look at how that student's performed on standards throughout their academic career. And we think that that's important, and that's been a need as we've been in two systems. And lastly, which seems simple, but it's become a challenge, we want to implement a tool that works efficiently and consistently for students and staff. That's login issues. That's performance issues on items and downloading pictures. Being a primary teacher, it is a lot to have a first grader sit and wait for a down, an image to download from an assessment and then have them respond appropriately or engage in that assessment item. We're experiencing that challenge, and we have over the last couple of years. We know that challenge does not exist within School City because we have a better experience at the secondary level, and that's something that all of our teachers and students deserve when they're engaging in assessment practices. Here's a quick look at what School City would look like for teachers. The simplicity of the landing page when they log in is shown on this screen. If a teacher wants to give an assessment, they would click on this assessments flip card, and it would take them to their, the tests for reports if they wanted to look at data. What's nice about this system is that when a child logs on to their School City account, it looks the exact same, so it's easy to support a student through that process. Students have a flip card of take a test and look at my results. In going back to our benchmarking opportunities, we want to make sure that we always put a comprehensive benchmark in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science that are aligned to Arizona standards. Right now, our challenge in elementary for grades 4 through 6 is finding a science benchmark that's aligned to the current standards. What we're finding is that sometimes vendors are taking old questions and trying to match them to the new standards rather than building new questions that really align to what our teachers are teaching. And so we want to make sure that that opportunity is there. By being a customer of School City already in secondary, we've been able to vet all of the science content that's been available, and we know that new questions have been created to those new science standards and that they just haven't been relabeled from old questions, so we're excited about that. We're looking for the ability to administer computer-based assessments with the opportunity to print special paper version. Not all of our students can complete an assessment on a computer, and right now, the current practice is that if a child can't take the test on the computer, they have to contact the assessment office. We have to make a copy of that benchmark, and then we have to send it over to the site. So there's a lot of pre-planning there. Moving into School City, they'll have a print-on-demand option. So if a child's in their classroom and the computer's not working, or if they have a child that is a special paper version and that planning didn't occur because a lot happens, they have the ability to print the test so that they can continue their process throughout the school day. We're currently missing that, and that's a challenge, so we're excited to be able to provide it. School City also provides risk level based on state-level cut scores. ATI Galileo provides that as well. This is a great opportunity to transition because our state is also transitioning in state assessments. This is our last year for AZM 2. Next year, they're implementing a new test, so cut scores and risk levels are going to be hard to manage for any district. So this is a great time for us to shift in to a new assessment platform and not miss anything that other districts would be able to experience. And while we're not looking to require this, but we know that it's been requested several times, School City has optional writing benchmark opportunities. Many of our sites, through their Site Journey 2025 plans, have writing goals, and they'd be able to access assessments within the School City platform to have a standardized writing assessment and be able to see what the needs are within the writing standards for their students. So we're excited to be able to provide that with School City. I also wanted to show you the growth reporting. We currently have this with our vendor. However, School City also provides this. It's important to highlight because this is directly linked to our Journey 2025 Board Goal 2B and Board Goal 3B, which is looking at growth in our benchmarks from pre to post. While we produce that data and share that data with you at the end of the year, it's important for teachers to be able to see that throughout the year. And so this report allows them to look at pre to interim 1 and see those growth opportunities for students. How are my students growing within these assessments, and are they making adequate growth? It's just another way to inform a teacher or give a teacher more information on how a student's performing so they can use that information along with all of the evidence that they use in the classroom to determine what best fits the needs of their students. So this report, if you hover over, it would show the student, and then you'd be able to see the scores, and you can click on them. It's a dynamic report. Along with that, there's a lot of other reports that are available. This is important to highlight because while our current vendor has some of these reports, it's a challenge to find them with navigation, and these are on-demand reports that School City provides that I'd like to click through just to show you some features that teachers will be able to access in their classroom with any assessment that they administer within School City. The first one being test results. Before I dive into that report, I do want to point out the ease of use because you'll notice that the reports that I listed on the previous slide are now in tabs up at the top. So a teacher can select an assessment and then go through all of the different reports within that assessment by just going through the tabs. So it's just very user-friendly, especially if we have teachers that are new to the data experience, or they're maybe not as comfortable as others in looking at data. So this test results page gives a quick summary of how students performed. It is a dynamic report where the teacher can click on the pie chart, and it can provide student lists. They can create groups. They can look at a variety of things within that assessment, just get a quick view of how their, quick feel of how their students performed on the assessment. The next one is student response. That just shows how students responded to each question. Once again, dynamic report. It tells you what type of question was presented. This would tell me multiple choice. If I highlighted over the number, it would tell me the standard or question that was presented, and then how students performed, along with a district average. We already have secondary sites that use this for Common Finals so they can see how their classes performed in terms of how the district performed, if it was out of range or within range. And then that allows us to see as a district how our cohorts are performing so we can make instructional shifts or even professional development opportunities based on that information. This one is exciting. So these are student feedback cards, and I love these, so I'm going to, I'm going to go into them because I love them. These are just great when you're wanting students to be aware of their learning and you want to engage in a really strong conversation about how they're doing within the standards, which is important. This provides the questions that were on the assessment, the student's response, and then the correct response. I'll be honest, as we were talking with teachers about this, some of the teachers cringed that the student would be able to see the correct response. So we wanted to be able to, and we get that because they have test security, they have tests that they want to use throughout the year so they have some standardization. We completely understand. This report can filter those out where you don't show those specific pieces, so they have the ability to manipulate that if they need to. But what's strong is being able to talk with a student or a parent about the standards that the student did well on within the assessment and what the child needs to work on within the assessment. So it provides that feedback. They're also, this is also a great report to learn, to use in your professional learning communities. So if you have a meeting about a student with intervention, or you're looking at enrichment opportunities, this is a great report that has data aligned to standards so you can have the strong conversations of how students are demonstrating their knowledge. We're excited to be able to present that one, and this got teachers excited, too. And then the last one that we'd like to look at is the standard analysis report. You have the ability, so within an assessment, it would show you how all of the students performed on each standard. But sometimes that can be overwhelming, especially on a comprehensive benchmark when there are a lot of standards on a test. So we have what's called the STOP standard, and if the teacher selects that, it will just show the standards where 75% of the class did not master those. And it simplifies the report and focuses the teacher or the professional learning community on what needs to be re-taught, maybe what intervention opportunities need to take place, or where to go next instructionally. So there's the ability to simplify that. This is great for sites or teachers that are new and are just diving into that data-driven experience and to be able to have these strong conversations that are aligned to standards and not feel overwhelmed by everything that's on a report. Okay, moving on to item banks. So it was important that we have item banks for the formative assessment process that teachers can utilize throughout the entire school year within their daily routine. This was a challenge, specifically in K-1. So since implementation of ATI Galileo in 2015, we consistently received feedback that there was not enough in the bank for kinder and first-grade teachers to be able to really utilize it for what it was intended to be used for. So we had many conversations, and over the course of the last few years, we've been able to increase the current bank that we utilize, but it's still not meeting the needs of our teachers. So that's something that we've always been focused on because we want to provide the experience that we promised to our teachers. So this is just looking at the mathematics bank, and I want to bring your attention to kindergarten. Right away, they have 714 items that they can utilize. These items are not the items in benchmarks, so those items have already been removed, the ones that we've put in place. These are questions that teachers can utilize throughout the year. First grade has 760. All teachers have access to all grade levels and all questions in the event that they have students that they're pushing forward in their learning or that they may need to fill in some gaps and provide some opportunity there. So overall, we have over 33,000 items, and that number continues to climb within School City. DOK is Depth of Knowledge, so those are different types of questions that are provided to teachers. And then importantly, the item type. So they're not all multiple choice, there's multiple select, and those technology-enhanced could be click and drag. It can be a written or a typed response, those types of pieces that are there. It can be a written or a typed response, those types of pieces that are there. So we have a breadth of different questions that would be available. Moving on to English Language Arts, we have over 31,000 items that our teachers can utilize. I'm going to focus you again on kindergarten and first grade. 700 in kindergarten, over 1,000 in first grade. We know we'll be meeting the needs of those teachers and students through this process. And again, we have a variety of item types that are available. The last one is science. And you'll notice that those numbers are significantly lower than the other item banks. But what I'd like to point out is that these are new items specifically built to align to the new standards that were implemented in science. These are not old questions that have been relabeled to our new standards. They truly have been written to assess the standards that our teachers are teaching and what our students are learning. This bank is a focus of School City that they continue to increase because the standards have been implemented. And we're excited that every grade level will have the opportunity to utilize questions in their classroom. In looking at School City, we had the opportunity to receive feedback from the field. So the first information that we received from the field was really at the beginning of the year when our teachers were able to take professional development at the two weeks that we had. School City, which is also with Illuminate, they provided us professional development experiences for our teachers. And in that, our elementary teachers signed up for School City, and we were immediately getting emails of, "When do we have access to School City? This looks pretty cool." And so we knew that we were on the right track of trying to maybe transition. In addition to that, we talked with principals about how their sites were feeling with ATI Galileo and if it was time to make an adjustment, and they were fully supportive. And then we also received field feedback from the leads that are on each campus that support testing and the formative assessment process. And when asking the question or the statement, "We should move to School City for the upcoming school year," overwhelmingly, they're ready to move to School City and feel that their sites would be supported. We also asked them what features they would like to learn more about within School City. So when we talked about the assessment team providing professional development opportunities, the assessment team actually goes out to each site and sometimes down to each grade level and provides a 30-minute professional development opportunity that's unique to the needs of that grade level or that campus. We also have a Google Classroom set on place so they have on-demand trainings. And this year, we've scheduled Google Meet so we have some virtual opportunities. But we wanted to prepare kind of what they were interested in. And ultimately, they want to know how to administer the exam and how to find the data, which we would expect during an initial implementation. They're curious about the K1 item banks. They're really interested in the accommodations and accessibility. That would be the accommodations that are available within computer-based testing and then that ability to print those paper exams. And then they had some other features that they were interested in as well. We did ask if they would like access to the science bank because it is an additional cost. And we wanted to make sure they were going to use it before we came to you and asked to provide it. And you'll see that 66% of the leads really felt like their sites would use that. And 23% said that they somewhat agree with that. I think it's more of looking at the questions, but we were excited that they were open to the opportunity of looking at those science questions. Additional feedback was they're looking forward to the ease of use for teachers. They like that School City is going to be district-wide. And then this one is really kind of hits at home. Thank you for being open for new options. As a proctor who helps with K1 Galileo testing, it is very painful when items don't load. So we're excited for being able to have some performance efficiencies within the platform. Now, anytime we're talking about a big tool and I'm showing you all of these great things that'll be included, we want to look at cost. This is already budgeted in our software expense. And based on our K6 enrollment, for this current year, we paid $160,000. So in looking at that same enrollment, the School City approximate cost for just elementary is going to be $142,000. We did include the science bank that we showed, which is an extra $9,300. So overall, year to year, we're looking at a little over $150,000, which is a small savings of $9,800 per year. But we get so much within the tool when we transition. So we're excited to save money and be able to get more. And then there is going to be that Train the Trainer professional development opportunity one year. We have assessment leads at each campus where they come in, they learn about the tool, and then they support that on their campus alongside the district assessment office. Okay, so I went over a lot tonight, but I want to just go back to our comprehensive view. So next year, although it looks like three major changes, we're looking at two small ones. We have our universal screener, which is a small transition to DIBELS 8 on the same platform. We're going to standardize our diagnostic for students that show at-risk using the core. And then we'd like to implement School City K-12 as our assessment tool to support formatives and benchmark testing. At this time, I take any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Really appreciate your presentation. I'm sure there's a few questions. Mr. Worth, do you want to start?
Can you briefly tell me why you think we needed to move from Galileo to School City?
Absolutely. The biggest thing is our teachers and students deserve the best product with the most in the item banks, and that's what we can absolutely provide. And there's better performance within School City, which we've been able to vet through our secondary experience over the last three years.
Was Galileo not improving their product?
It's not that they're not improving. There was a purchase. So they were purchased by another company two years ago. And that has changed the direction of some of their initiatives, naturally. But it's not at the rate of what School City can provide. And Chandler teachers and students deserve the best. And we know that right now, they're not getting the best by not having School City. So right now, we have -- secondary's got a great tool that has a lot of features, and elementary doesn't have that point yet.
Thank you.
To be fully transparent.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. It all sounds really great. But I have to remember, too, like, I'm not a teacher, too. So what are some barriers that you foresee in switching from Galileo to School City? Because you talked about a lot of really great advantages, but are there any barriers that you guys can expect that you need to overcome?
Absolutely. There's natural barriers anytime you transition, right? And the barrier is just being comfortable with the tool. And so we were intentional in 2015 by picking ATI Galileo because it wasn't as overwhelming in terms of navigating because they'd never had an assessment tool in place. The transition should be smoother, but I do feel like that's going to be our biggest barrier is really just getting them comfortable with this tool and where to find things, those pieces. Outside of that, I really think it's just going to be platform usage would be our biggest barrier.
Ms. Love, also, I think because of the exposure and experience our teachers have had with Galileo, they know where to go. And it's very similar in the operational. I think it was harder to get into the first system because it was unnatural. I mean, teachers really didn't know how to maneuver that system. But now that they get in systems, they look at content banks, which are much richer in School City. I think it's going to be a lot easier of a transition. But also, and I know Amber won't boast on this, but she and her team have been working hard on trying to make that seamless through really working with School City a little bit because we had it at the secondary and looking at seeing how those transitions could occur.
And then I guess my next question would be around the Train the Trainer model. How do you choose? I think there were 60 for one and then 30 for the other. How do you choose those people?
So the sites have someone that they select. On the assessment tool for School City, it only shows 30 because the other set supports state testing, which is a different, you know, the substantive assessment that we're doing right now or in the next couple of weeks. And so the sites go through their own process of selecting. Sometimes it's typically teachers volunteering for that opportunity if they're looking for growth or leadership. There's some wonderful leads.
Last question on that. Is that a one-time cost? Or do you foresee like they have to go back for additional training as new things get updated?
That's a great question. It's typically a one-time cost. The district assessment team is probably the strongest team that I've seen with professional development. And so we provide all future professional development after that initial training. Being that we've used School City for the last three years, we're very comfortable with training for the future. So that would be at no cost.
Thank you.
So from DIBELS to DIBELS 8, you can go back and look at past performance of kids and see what was happening. But between Galileo and School City, there's not going to be anything like that, is there?
Not authentically. So that's a good barrier that you just brought up. We're going to have to find opportunities to -- we already export that data out of the system and put it into our data warehouse. And so our next step is going to be putting it in our business analytics tool so that they have a Tableau visualization to access that data. Yeah, and that's going to be work on the research team, which we're ready to support.
Okay, so I guess I had a question. I'm familiar with School City and have used it before. And there have been issues in the past, and I know there's always updates. So my information is probably out of date, so I wanted to clarify. There were some issues with accessibility and accommodations not always working like they're supposed to in School City. Did they talk to you at all, the company, about like what they're doing to improve that in their system?
They're constantly coming up with modifications. So they do three big updates throughout the school year, and we've been able to utilize those with Common Finals. What we're finding is that if they're put in, if the accommodations put in last minute, sometimes it doesn't sync. And so there are some technical difficulties, but not enough that we're keeping anyone away from that accommodation. And they've been great in responding to our requests. So I do know in our initial year, we were struggling to keep it engaged in the assessment. And we've had a better experience the last year or so with that.
I was curious why -- and maybe it's just a call that has been made. The one core subject of social studies not being included. What was the rationale behind that?
Oh, social sciences. There's already an item bank listed within School City on that.
Okay, because I only saw the three.
In elementary, we benchmark with English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. They already will have access to social sciences, and we didn't have to pay for that.
Oh, okay. Are there ways to, in any of these systems, embed the interventions in the reports either for the teacher and/or for the student where it's like, oh, you get to click here and like here's where you can go or here are suggestions of the systems we have, the programs we have that have specifics for this standard or for that standard?
The assessment, both assessment vendors approached that opportunity. But there are usually free online resources that are aligned to standards, similar to Khan Academy and things like that. So it's not something that we want to fully engage in because we want to make sure those interventions are approved and their quality to follow the MTSS process. So we're not highlighting or recommending that. They are available. But we'd really like them to follow that process so we have some research-based interventions for students.
So they don't really give you an option to like plug in your interventions to pop up on the reports?
Are the interventions that --
Yeah, like if we have a program that we use, like, you know, that's specific that we could --
Nothing that we could sync with, yeah. School City provides that opportunity. We looked at it. It wasn't as seamless as it was delivered to us. So we're not ready to move that direction.
Okay.
Yeah.
And some other people have brought this up, but it just seems a little bit high, the $6,000 per trainer for School City. Like, did they give a rationale why that was so high? And is there any way to mitigate that at all?
It's 6,000 total. And it's 6,000 total for those participants.
That's much better.
Yeah, that's for all participants. But you can challenge me to go and have a conversation. I absolutely can, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now is it working? Yes, okay, great. Are all of ours' assessments always done in English or are there opportunities for other languages that if the child needs that?
We test in English because that's what they're assessed in. So that's the language we use. Now, there are opportunities for accommodations word-to-word dictionaries that are English language learners that if they have that within their plan, they can access that through their classroom. So they have those opportunities to meet their needs.
Okay. With ATI Galileo, I believe we used to have three assessments per year that we did for the students. How many assessments per year will be done with the School City assessment tool?
We've always had four.
Four, sorry.
No, it's okay. We've always had four. We've had a lot of conversations about this because we do get that feedback. But knowing that we are in a unique year of trying to determine learning gaps and fill them as quickly as we can and to be able to constantly reflect on how students are performing and demonstrating their transfer of knowledge within those standards, we'd really like to remain at four and just continue that process, not adding on anymore, just transitioning the tool.
Okay, and then my final question is actually how this assessment, how School City, how the results of these benchmarks, the benchmark testing, actually correlates with the standardized test scores that students achieve when they get the tests?
Absolutely. So they have to provide us a correlation at the end of each year. So they use their benchmarks, and then they have cut scores. And School City uses MIMICs, and then they have what's called the INSPECT. And they have cut scores that eventually meet up with those state assessment cut scores to produce a risk level. And then at the end of each year, they provide us a correlation document to tell us how well they did in identifying that student risk. We've had great success with ATI Galileo of being able to predict how students are going to do. And that's actually demonstrated the need because sometimes we have teachers that or staff that will just focus on that universal screener and say, hey, they passed the universal screener. They should have been proficient on the AZM2 test. But they're missing that standard's performance or the performance on the standards. And that's where that benchmarking is crucial in that risk level because in any year when we had a move-on rating list, they've always been identified by our assessment tool. We've looked at the correlations with School City. They're strong. They're similar to ATI Galileo. They've made a presence in Arizona. And so we're looking forward to that continued work as we transition to a new assessment.
Okay.
Ms. Maslow, we also use, and that's something that Amber hit on, is that risk level. We use that across the board when we're looking at retentions. We bring as much data in as possible to know if interventions are going to work or if retention is going to be accurate. And in the past, we have seen that the risk levels have been pretty accurate all the way across through state testing and that the levels pretty much in both tests, both subtest math and ELA, have been pretty identical trends in predicting a student's where a student's going to be toward the end of the year.
And I guess my true comment is I'm hoping that we will either be able to do better with School City and not lose ground on that compared to the ATI Galileo. And so what, do you have an assessment of that?
I do.
Or a risk, shall we say, a risk assessment?
We're absolutely at a point where we -- our teachers and students are ready for more in terms of formative assessment practice and looking for quality questions and performance on those benchmarks. And so that work's just going to continue to improve as our teachers become more comfortable with data and as they engage in those assessment tools. Now that we've streamlined K-12, we're going to have access, we'll have access to how students have performed in previous years, which is just going to strengthen the teacher's knowledge of that student before they come into the classroom and another piece of evidence. So as an assessment office, we're challenged to make sure that teachers feel supported in this implementation, and we're solely focused on it. So we're excited.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate the presentation this evening and kind of gives us -- there's a lot of facets to assessment and what we're doing in the elementary schools and all over the district. And it does help us to understand what the process is and really what we're looking -- and really what we're looking at to, how to improve student outcomes. So thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and take about a five-minute break because I do believe that there will be, need to be a little bit of setup for the students that are coming in and all that. So we will reconvene in about five minutes.